Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay, Chief Cazi, which means Judge for Alodio and Moore's Praetorium, Anticolorana. The acronym is ANPAC. We are a state provincial government under the Moroccan Empire. Alright, so today... I usually try to keep it shut because of traffic out there. Sorry, good brother. I don't know if he can pump up some more AC or whatever.
It is, it's pumping.
You got no less closing everybody here.
It's coming, it's on, it's coming.
Alright, good brother. Alright, let's get back to it. So today will be a continuation from Part 5. So today is Part 6. The same subject matter of how did the Moors lose the land? And more importantly, how do we get the land back? So in Part 5, we talked about the Citizenship, Expedition, and Protections Abroad document based upon the United States of America's Act of Congress with them using their pen to enact things that remove the Moors from their birthright. So keep in mind, we always must remember that the colonists are always in a feud with the Moors. How do we know? Because under definition of feudal law, feudal is a compound word for feud with the Owls. And the Owls are the Moors. And what is the antonym to feudal? It is Alodio. Alodio starts with A-L, the Owl. So the Alodios, the Moors, are the highest sovereigns of the land within the Moroccan Empire. We must remember that. Also, we talked about in Session 5 was the fact that we looked up the definition of Black in an etymology dictionary. And we learned that anyone who calls themselves Black as an identity must understand that everyone has a nationality and their nationality is Moor. That is pointed out in an etymology dictionary. So today, we will continue with understanding the problem and the solutions based upon law and history. So today, what we'll do is we'll talk about these contracts. I talk about contracts quite often. So what is the contract that I continue to refer to? It is a Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1786, that was fully ratified in 1787. Alright, so today we'll be talking about treaties, alright? More specifically, we'll go over the treaty today, alright? So the first thing we must understand is we must always try to get a fundamental understanding of words. What does treaty mean? So today, we'll have the mothers read the definition of treaty in the Henry Kemmo Black's Fourth Edition Dictionary, the word treaty. Alright, mother?
Yes. Treaty, international law. A compact made between two or more independent nations with a view to the public welfare. Case study. An agreement, league, or contract between two or more nations or sovereigns, formally signed by commissioners, properly authorized, and solemnly ratified by the several sovereigns or the supreme power of each state. Case laws.
Okay, let's stop right there. So let's go back and get a fundamental understanding of what we truly just read, okay? So... Treaty. So first thing you must understand, the title says international law. A treaty is international law. Why is it international law? Because international law takes the jurisdiction of helping with disputes between two separate nations. So treaties are for two separate nations, two separate states that come together under a treaty. Treaty means how you treat another nation, okay? So it immediately understands international law, alright? So here we go. A compact made between two or more independent nations with a view to the public welfare. So right then and there, you must understand that this is about two independent nations, alright? Those are for treaties. But let's continue on. An agreement, league, or contract between two or more nations or sovereigns, formally signed by commissioners, properly authorized, authorized, and solemnly ratified by the several sovereigns or the supreme power of each state. So watch this. These are keys to the answers to the test. Moors continue to want to enforce the treaties, but yet we continue to get pushed back by the United States of America. Why is that? It's because the Moors have not ratified their constitution and state. That way, they are a separate nation. The United States of America is a separate nation. If you don't have a state, that means you're not a separate nation. Right now, Moors are operating within the jurisdiction of the United States, even though it's a corporation, they are a state. Nonetheless, because it's what you call a fact. The truth is, they do not have a nation because now they're a corporation. That's the truth. But the fact of the matter is, they are a nation. Fact. You must understand the difference between a fact and the truth. However, the Moors do not have a state. You cannot enforce a treaty unless you have a state with a constitution, your seal, your bylaws to enforce your law in order to be able to enforce any treaty. You must have a state. So therefore, the Moors must understand that now we must start using the state to enforce our national rights. And until then, you are still a Moorish subject instead of a Moorish national that comes on their free national constitution of their own, of their state provincial government. Moors must understand that now, okay? Most importantly, it says it was the commissioners properly authorized. What does properly authorized mean? You must understand, in the Vienna Convention of 1969, when you read the preamble and Articles 1 and 2, just off the top, it talks about you being authorized representatives of what? A state. So the Moors have not been following the instructions. The Moors must now ratify a state through its constitution. That must be known. Let's continue.
Oh, a treaty is not only a law, but also a contract between two nations and must, if possible, be so construed as to give full force and effect to all its parts.
Stop. Thank you, mother. Let's do the interpretation, get an understanding. A treaty is not only a law, so a treaty is de-law, but also a contract between two nations and must, if possible, be so construed as to give full force and effect to all its parts. Now, what we're going to learn today when we go over the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1786, we're going to learn a little bit more about how do you, in fact, how do you give full force and effect to all its parts? Remember I said that, to all its parts. We'll talk about that today. But more importantly, a treaty is law and a treaty is a contract. So as we've been learning in the first Sessions 1 through 5, we've been learning that the colonists, these people who call themselves white, these people who call themselves the American, the reality is this, they've been hiding the names of the parties to the contract. And they themselves been going on a number of years called white and they're not white. They themselves understand they've given the Moors, the unconscious Moors, a number of years of black. What does that mean? In order to enforce a contract, the parties must be known and the parties must be called out by their name. So therefore, if you go on a number of years of black, you can't enforce treaties. Even if you're a Moor by your nationality, you can't enforce contracts unless you have a state. What's the reference point? All you gotta do is read the Treaty of Vienna, which is the Vienna Convention, 1969. Articles 1 through 85 tells you all the instructions, all of those instructions for only states. Most importantly, you go back and look at another reference point. Go look at the website for the International Court of Justice called the ICJ. And it would show you what's called the Statute Manual. And as soon as you open the statute manual that ICJ uses as what they call their well settled principles of statutes, it immediately tell you, you can only enforce it if you're a state. You can only use the ICJ if you're a state. You go down to Section 3, it says Parties. It immediately tell you the parties must be a state. So Moors have to understand, yeah, we've proclaimed our nationality, but there's more boxes, Moors. So today, we're talking about that as we read the treaty about some of those boxes that we unfortunately have not been checking, which unfortunately means that we have been incompetent and trying to defend our rights of our nationality. So today, we'll learn how we become competent Moors. That must be known, okay? Let's continue the reading of the definition of treaty.
Personal treaties relate exclusively to the persons of the contracting sovereigns, such as family alliances and treaties guaranteeing the throne to a particular sovereign and his family. As they relate to the persons, they expire, of course, on the death of the sovereign or the extinction of his family. With the advent of constitutional government in Europe, these treaties have lost their importance. The real treaties relate solely to the subject matters of the convention, independently of the persons of the contracting parties, and continue to bind and state although there may be changes in its constitution or in the persons of its rulers.
Alright, thank you, mother. I'll go back, do the interpretations in a strict sense. Watch this. Personal treaties relate exclusively to the persons of the contracting sovereigns, such as family alliances and treaties guaranteeing the throne to a particular sovereign and his family. As they relate to the persons, they expire, of course, on the death of the sovereign or the extinction of his family. Watch this. The United States of America, through the Acts of Congress, said the Moors were dead on paper, hypothecation and exteat. More specifically, the Naturalization Act of 1870 said the Moors shall now be citizens of the United States, aliens of the United States, subjects of the United States, shall be the blacks of the United States, shall be the coloreds of the United States, shall be the minorities of the United States, shall be the African Americans of the United States, everything but Moor. So what they did is they said the Moors were dead based upon what's called civiliter mortus. Civiliter mortus. They said the Moors are dead. So what are we reading right here? The treaties can't be enforced by someone that's dead, quite naturally. So what the United States did through their corruption of their representatives of the state and their coercion by the representative of the state and then through use of force, they have now forced themselves to say that the Moors are dead. So therefore, the treaties, the treaties are not valid anymore. However, the treaties are always valid because the Moors aren't dead. It's because the Moors haven't made the claim. We must use our pen to make the claim. And all the way to make that claim, we must have a state. We must have a state, okay? So watch this. With the advent of the constitutional government in Europe, these treaties have lost their importance. Real treaties relate solely to the subject matters of the convention, independently of the persons of the contracting parties, and continue to bind the state, not individuals, the state. Moors have been trying to enforce treaties as individuals. We can't do that, that makes us incompetent. You must understand the rules of international law have changed. As of 1969, you must have a state to enforce treaties. That's called just cogits. Just cogits. What does just cogits mean? It means the norms of international law that cannot be interrupted, which means Moors can't interrupt the law. We must now abide by international law and the norms, which means you must have a state. Continuing, although they may be changes in its constitution or in the person of its rulers. So what has changed? The rulers, quote unquote, have changed the names of the parties. And now the Moors are having what's called a reawakening, a restoration, reparations. What's happening now? Now we're telling the world, we're Moors. We have proclaimed our nationality and we want our rights. But Moors haven't read the instructions and we must do that. We have to become competent in understanding international law. That's what a treaty is. A treaty is international law. We have to study international law now. Okay, you got a question, mother?
Yes. When it says real treaties relate solely to the subject matters of the convention, they're talking about the Vienna Convention.
Ah.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So your conventions are your contemporary treaties. All nations around the world, regardless of prior treaties, agreed through the Charter of the United Nations that now, as of 1969, no treaty can be enforced by an individual. It must be enforced through the representatives, the authorized representatives through the state called your consul, your ministers, as well as your ambassadors. Those are the only authorized people that can help to represent you.
So it's like the ground rules for all treaties?
Correct. However, your elected officials can appoint whomever they want to be a liaison and representing the free nationals of their state. So as long as Moors keep operating as Moorish subjects, because Moorish subject means you don't have a state to represent you. As soon as Moors understand that you need to go from a Moorish subject status into a Moorish national status based upon their free elections of their ratified government that has a constitution, a seal and a flag, matriarchal council, then they can start moving forward, putting together three branches of government and govern the affairs of their own nationals. So you hear Moors always say, enforce the constitution, enforce the constitution, enforce the constitution. Well, wait a minute. According to the Vienna Convention, you must have your own state. So if you got your own state, that means you must have your own constitution to enforce. Your constitution is a domestic political document that's a birth record of your nation, your latitude longitude that comes together. But when you have agreements with other nations, that's the treaty and that's international law. So first, you must recognize yourself with your constitution. Then you can enforce international law. Alright. So what I would like to do is now that we have a fundamental understanding of the word treaty, now let's go read a treaty. The Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1786. Now, why do I say 1786? Because that is the year that Sidi Mohamed, which is better known as Abdullah Ibn Muhammad III, he is the person, excuse me, he is the emperor who authorized the treaty to be fully executed in the Moroccan courts in 1786. That must be known, so the sovereign signed it first, okay? And then that treaty came over to the United States of America through their Congress. They fully ratified that treaty into their domestic law, alright? So we hear Moors say the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1787 is really 1786 because that's when our government signed it, alright? So let's get over to the treaty. Treaty of Peace and Friendship. It says 1787 on my document, but that's how most people put together the treaty. But the reality is it's 1786, alright? That must be known. Alright, so what you're seeing here is after the treaty has been fully ratified by the United States of America and its citizens, its authorized representatives who have their own state and constitution. What you must understand before we read this, you must understand is Moors. The United States has been checking the boxes. The United States of America has been checking the boxes. What do I mean when I say that? The United States of America will tell you, watch this. They proclaim their nationality. What do they claim their nationality is? The United States of America. Look at any passport, it says United States of America. What's the next box they check? They have a constitution. Not only do they have a constitution, they've had two constitutions. We all must always remember that prior to 1786, they had a constitution called the Articles of the Confederation under what they call the Continental Congress, alright? In which they established that in 1781. Then they dissolved it in 1789. So then they ratified their second constitution in 1789, alright? So you must understand, not only has the United States, do they have a constitution, the United States of America has actually ratified two and dissolved one of them. So they've checked the box. What else do they have? They have a seal, which is the Moorish Bald Eagle because the eagle comes from Morocco. What else do the United States of America have? They have a flag, they perform elections, inaugurations, they have birth certificates, they have oath and allegiance, anybody takes the oath to take an office, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which means they've created a state. That's why they call themselves the United States. Okay, the next question is, can the Moors say that they've checked these boxes? It's an overwhelming probability that the answer is no. However, ANPAC has checked these boxes. We have what you call full powers at this time. We are poised to join the ranks of all nations around the world according to United Nations. We'll talk about that later on, but we're poised. So therefore, as we start to read the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, I'm going to point out things that relate to this list that most Moors don't have in terms of them creating their state, alright? This started with the reading of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1786, that was fully ratified in 1787 between Morocco and the United States of America. You notice the title says the United States? That's what you call a misnomer. So therefore, anytime you see documents like this, you must catch it and realize that was a misnomer. I have it up here as an example that the United States will pull little misnomer games and put United States on documents. Immediately, you think those are two parties and it is not. It's Morocco and the United States of America. But I put that here just so you can see how they'll put a misnomer in, alright? That must be known. So later on, you're going to read in the document who the true parties are. I'm just giving you an example, watch this. Mother, if you can go ahead and read the document, that would be great.
To all persons to whom these presents shall come or be made known, whereas the United States of America in Congress, assembled by their commission bearing date, the 12th day of May 1, of May 1784, thought proper to constitute John Adams, Benjamin Franklin, and Thomas Jefferson, their ministers, plenipotentiary, giving to them or a majority of them full powers to confer, treat, or negotiate with the ambassador, minister, or commissioner of his majesty, the Emperor of Morocco concerning a treaty of amity and commerce to make and receive propositions for such treaty and to conclude and sign the same, transmitting to the United States of America in Congress, assembled with their final ratification.
Stop. What did we just learn? Watch this. Watch this. To all persons to whom these presents shall come or be made known whereas the United States of America part of the contract. In Congress, assembled by their commission bearing the date of the 12th day of May 1784, thought proper to constitute John Adams, Benjamin Franklin, and Thomas Jefferson, their ministers, plenipotentiary, giving to them or a majority of them full powers to confer, treat, and negotiate with the ambassador, the minister or commissioner of his majesty, the Emperor of Morocco concerning a treaty of amity and commerce to make and receive propositions for such treaty and to conclude and sign the same. Watch this. What did we just learn in the first paragraph? Moors been skipping over this. We learned the United States is putting on the record, the United States of America, proper, that they formed their government. They're letting Sidi Mohamed know, we checked the boxes, that we are authorized representatives to come and talk to you and that these authorized representatives of the United States of America can now go and talk to authorized representatives of Moroccan government. Watch this. Moors been trying to talk to the United States of America about we got our nationality and we deserve our rights. And where's your government to represent you? Where's your state to represent you? The Moors have to read international law. Right there, first paragraph, Moors been skipping at. They're talking diplomatic relations right now. Continue, mother.
And by one other commission bearing date, the 11th day of March, 1785, did further empower the said ministers, plenipotentiary or a majority of them by writing under the hands and seals to appoint such agent in the said business as they might think proper with authority under the directions and instruction of the said ministers to commerce and prosecute the said negotiations and conferences for the said treaty, provided that the said treaty should be signed by ministers. And whereas we, the said John Adams and Thomas Jefferson, two of the said ministers, plenipotentiary, the said Benjamin Franklin being absent by writing upon the hand and seal of the said John Adams at London, October 5th, 1785, and of the said Thomas Jefferson at Paris, October the 11th of the same year, did appoint Thomas Barclay, agent in the business of for said, giving him the powers therein which by the said second commission we were authorized to go give. And the said Thomas Barclay, in pursuance thereof, bath arranged articles for a treaty of amity and commerce between the United States of America and his majesty, the Emperor of Morocco, and sealed with his royal seal, being translated into the language of said United States of America, together with the attestations thereto annexed are in the following words, "to wit..."
Stop. Thank you, mother. Let's go back and get an understanding. That's a long paragraph, right?
Yeah.
What do we take away from this? Once again, what's happening? The United States of America is letting Sidi Mohamed know and his authorized representatives, the United States of America and their authorized representatives are using what's called diplomatic relations. The United States of America say they appointed someone a liaison, Thomas Barclay, to go over and discuss matters and affairs on behalf of the United States in their 13 columns. What have this Moors been doing in terms of sending their authorized representatives to go talk to the United States? They haven't been doing that. So therefore, the Moors have been acting in what's called an incompetent, incompetent manner. And that's not to be taken as a negative. That's not to be taken as a challenge. What we're talking about simply just sticking to the strict sense of understanding international law, just cogits, which is the norms of international law that cannot be interrupted. Moors must create a state. Moors must create a state so they can send their authorized representatives to deal with the affairs of Moorish nationals and not Moorish subjects. Let's continue.
To wit, in the name of Almighty God, this is a treaty of peace and friendship established between us and the United States of America, which is confirmed and which we have ordered to be written in the book and sealed with our royal seal at our court of Morocco in the twenty-fifth day of the blessed month of Shabban in the year one thousand two hundred. Trusting in God, it will remain permanent.
Stop. Thank you, mother. Watch this. Seals are being used. Who can use a seal? Only a fully ratified state and their representatives. Moors have been putting seals on documents, but are those seals? Do those seals come from a ratified state? There's a high probability the answer is no. So therefore, when the United States looks at our documents, the response they give us is either no response, or they'll come back and say, "Everything you sent was patently frivolous." What are they saying when they say that? They say that what you presented is a fact. We get it. You have a nationality. You sent us some documentation. But the Moors haven't been following the instructions. If you didn't send it with your state representatives, along with your constitution, your seal, and your provincial flag, then you haven't been reading the instructions. So therefore, we give them permission to move forward because they still look at us as if we're Moorish subjects instead of Moorish nationals who have their own state. That must be known. So for now on, Moors have to stop being individuals and work through their body politic, their population, and enforce their rights as nationals through their constitution and state. And put their seal on their documents that represents their nationals and not their self-appointed individuals. Let's continue.
Article one. We declare that both parties have agreed that this treaty consisting of twenty-five articles shall be inserted in this book and delivered to the Honorable Thomas Barclay, the agent of the United States now at our court. With those approbation, it has been made and who is duly authorized on their part to treat with us concerning all the matters contained therein.
Stop. Thank you, mother. Watch this. Moors have been zipping right past Article one. They did not interpret Article one that gives you specific instructions. Watch this. "We declare that both parties," who are the parties? You must have a state in order to be a party, "have agreed that this treaty consisting of twenty-five articles shall be inserted in this book and delivered to the Honorable Thomas Barclay, the agent of the United States." An agent must be an appointed person by its authorized officials. Now, at our court, Morocco's court, with whose approbation it has been made and who is duly authorized. Moors haven't been duly authorized because we don't have a state. Let's continue.
Article two.
What? Hold on. Let's continue. "To treat with us concerning all, all, all the matters contained therein." What does that mean? Article one sets the stage for all twenty-five articles. But yet, if you didn't check the box just on Article one, you can't enforce the twenty-five articles. Moors continue to talk about, "I'm enforcing Article twenty, Article twenty-one, Article twenty-two." You didn't finish with Article one. We have all made these mistakes in our presentments to several state corporations as well as to the United States. We've been sending amendments of jurisdiction, co-warrantio. We've been sending all types of counter notification and access. We've been sending habeas corpus. And guess what? It's all what you call patently frivolous because we didn't have a state that supported those documents. We didn't get past Article one. AIPAC has a government now. So we will be going to the United Nations enforcing our rights if the other party to the contract being the United States of America does not stick to their obligations. Let's continue. So therefore, Moors must have a state in order to enforce their duly authorized representatives. Let's continue. Article two, mother. Thank you.
Article two. "If either of the parties shall be at war with any nation whatever, the other party shall not take a commission from the enemy nor fight under their colors."
Okay, watch this. Article two. So therefore, what that basically means that you can't wear the uniform of your enemy to fight your allies. You can't do that. And vice versa. Keep in mind, treaties are what you call a vice versa treaty. Whatever Moore's not supposed to do, the United States of America's not supposed to do. It's a contract for both parties. Even though one of the parties is the landlord, the other party is the tenant. So the landlord always has a slight advantage over the tenant nonetheless. Why? Because the sovereign is the country that drafted the document. It always goes back to the original country of the sovereigns who scribe that treaty. That's why it's very important to understand the United States of America had to go to the emperor and the emperor had to come to them because they're in a subordinate position, okay? Article three.
"If either of the parties shall be at war with any nation whatever and take a prize belonging to that nation, and there shall be found on board subjects or effects belonging to either of the parties, the subject shall be set at liberty and the effect returned to the owners. And if any goods belonging to any nation with whom either party shall be at war shall be loaded on vessels belonging to the other party, they shall pass free and unmolested without any attempt being made to take or detain them."
Okay, watch this, Moors. We must put this in proper context of what's happening during this time. During this time, we're talking about seventeen eighty-six. So what's happening during this time? You got wars going on within the Atlantic Ocean. You got France, you have Spain, you got Morocco, the United States, and Great Britain, all sharing the seas dealing with trade. C. Muhammad has come in and said, "I want to stop the piracy of all these nations that are fighting." He wants to stop it, okay? That must be known why this article's important. C. Muhammad wants to have a peace amongst all nations that were sharing the Atlantic Ocean during that time. Okay? That must be understood. But at the same time, you must understand that this treaty now is what you call an admiralty and maritime law contract. What does that mean? That means that this contract as it relates to vessels, because back then, they were talking about vessels, ships, vessels. Now, admiralty and maritime law around the world means that the whole world is a sea. So every, all the people who walk around are really vessels. You are a vessel according to admiralty and maritime law. We're talking Noah's Ark. So therefore, you are a vessel. That's why you have blood vessels, blood vessels. So you are an actual vessel yourself, okay? So as you're reading this treaty, you must understand, you gotta look at this on two levels. They're talking about ships, and they're talking about you as well on the admiralty and maritime law under your blood vessel. So when they say vessel, think you as a human being as well as a ship in the sea. They're talking about both, alright? Now we're gonna go on to Article four.
"A signal or pass shall be given to all vessels belonging to both parties by which they are to be known when they meet at sea. And if the commander of a ship of war of either party shall have other ships under his convoy, the declaration of the commander shall alone, shall alone be sufficient to exempt any of them from examination."
Okay, watch this. "A signal or pass shall be given to all vessels belonging to both parties." So who are the vessels? Did I just tell you earlier? You are a vessel. As well as your, what you call a car, that's also a vessel. So a vehicle is a vessel. A vessel is just what you call conveyance, mode of conveyance. So therefore, watch this. Moors on their human being in their pocket have a nationality card. That nationality card is what you call a signal, signal or pass. First sentence, Article four. "A signal or pass shall be given to all vessels belonging to both parties." So Moors have a nationality card. Moors have tags on the back of their conveyance that talks about their relations to the Moroccan government. But watch this. Why do the United States accept our nationality cards? Why are they still giving us citations on the side of the road even though we have tags and say, "We're not a part of their jurisdiction"? It's because when you have those instruments, they're supposed to represent your nation. The Moors don't have a nation as it relates to politics. You must understand, Moors have to have a state. And through their state, they can have their nationality card. And whatever tags they have on any conveyance, because your nationality card is a conveyance document. Whatever you have inside your conveyance of your car, those documents are also conveyance documents. So if you don't have a state, you can't enforce nationality cards, tags, or anything as it relates to signs and symbols. So when you waving that flag on your conveyance, Moroccan flag, yeah, that means something. But the next question they're gonna say is, you got your constitution, your seal, your flag, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And as soon as you say no, guess what? You still a Moorish subject. Subject to what? The rules, regulations, codes, and statutes of the United States of America because the Moors haven't been following the instructions. But now, we must start following instructions. What are the instructions? You must be a state to enforce that nationality card and those tags on your conveyance that creates the property of your nation. So the United States and the several states are saying, "That conveyance that you're still driving around in or traveling around in saying you're a Moor, don't matter if you don't have the proper documentation. That's international law." Let's continue.
Article five. "If either of the parties shall be at war and shall meet a vessel at sea belonging to the other, it is agreed that if an examination is to be made, it shall be done by sending a boat with two or three men only. And if any guns shall be bred and injury done without reason, the offending party shall make good of all damages."
Alright, thank you, mother. So Article five, interpretation. Listen. "If either of the parties shall be at war," and right now, the Moors did not even realize they're at war, they're at war with the colonists because most people didn't know they was a Moor. But once you wake up and realize you're a Moor, you say, "Yeah, we really at war. Look what they're doing to them. They're usurping us." They're not sticking to the treaties. They're not sticking to the conventions. They're not, they're not sticking to their own constitution. They're not sticking to the declarations. Watch this. "If either party shall be at war and shall meet a vessel at sea belonging to the other, it is agreed that if an examination is to be made, it shall be done by sending a boat with two or three men only. And if any guns shall be bred and injury done without reason, the offending party shall make good of all damages." Watch this. So the cops pull it behind Moors, whether they unconscious or conscious. Whether they got on a durag or they got on a fence. Watch this. The cop rolls up behind you and guess what they roll up in? A cruiser. What is a cruiser? A vessel. Remember, they used to call cop cars cruisers? See, they understand language. They roll up in their cruiser, which means you must have a cruiser. Then they perform what's called an examination with their two or three men in the boat. The boat is the cruiser. Listen. Upon examination, though, they find out you Moors don't have a state. You Moors don't have a constitution, flag, or seal. Timeout. Moors will say, "But we have the Moroccan flag." That is correct. That is correct. Watch this. The Moroccan flag is the mother flag for the world. It's the flag that represents Moors all around the world that have been subjugated. You got Moors in Germany. You got Moors in Spain. You got Moors in Brazil. They can always come back home to this flag. This flag represents all the Moors. However, according to the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine, you must have a state. I'm talking international law. This is a worldwide flag. Where's your provincial flag? Wait a minute, Moors. Where's your constitution seal? Et cetera, representing under examination that you're a fully ratified state. So therefore, the cops are performing examination, even though they don't realize it. What they're saying for the record is, "Moors are incompetent." Because they already know Negro blacks and colors are incompetent, but they're testing the Moors too. Moors must understand, we have to stick to international law. It's called just cogits. Look it up. It's Article fifty-three of the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine. Article fifty-three. Okay, mother. If you can read, please.
Article six. "If any Moor shall bring citizens of the United States or their effects to His Majesty, the citizens shall immediately be set at liberty and the effects restored. And in like manner, if any Moor, not a subject of the dominions, shall make prize of any of the citizens of America or their effects and bring them into any of the ports of His Majesty, they shall be immediately released and they will be considered as under His Majesty's protection."
Watch this. Thank you, mother. Article six. Immediately, what you must recognize is that not only Moors come under the protection of the Soviet, so do the citizens of the United States of America because we in a treaty of peace and friendship. That must be understood. But more importantly, anytime, immediately, watch this. "If any Moor shall bring citizens of the United States or their effects to His Majesty, the citizen shall be immediately be set at liberty and effects restored." Remember what I told you. This treaty is vice versa. If the United States of America has detained or arrested a Moor, they must be released immediately. Released to who? Into the hands of their nation, into the hands of their state representatives. If the Moors have their state and the United States of America citizen does something wrong, we're obligated to now on the counter notification access, notify the United States of America, "Hey, one of your citizens breaking the law." Here are the charges we rolled up. You deal with it. It's a vice versa contract. Continue with the reading. I got it. "And in like manner," see, it says, "in like manner." In like manner means vice versa. All these articles are in like manner. "If any Moor, not a subject of the dominions, shall make prize of any of the citizens of America or their effects and bring them into any of the ports of His Majesty, they shall be immediately released and they will be considered as under His Majesty's protections." Alright, let's continue. Article seven.
"If any vessel of either party shall put into a port of the other and have occasion for their provisions or other supplies, they shall be furnished without any interruption or molestation."
Alright, that's self-explanatory, okay? Let's move on to Article eight.
"If any vessel of the United States shall meet with a disaster at sea and put into one of our ports to repairs, she shall be at liberty to land and reload her cargo without paying any duty whatsoever."
Let's continue. Article nine.
"If any vessel of the United States shall be cast on shore on any part of our coast, she shall remain at the disposition of the owners and no one shall attempt going near her without their approbation as she is then considered particularly under our protection. And if any vessel of the United States of America shall be forced to put into our ports by stress of weather or otherwise, we shall not be compelled to land her cargo but shall remain in tranquility until the commander shall think proper to proceed on his voyage."
Alright, let's continue. Article ten.
"If any vessel of either of the parties shall have an engagement with a vessel belonging to any of the Christian powers within gunshot of the forts of the other, the vessel so engaged shall be defended and protected as much as possible." The vessel so engaged shall be defended and protected as much as possible until she is in safety. And if any American vessel shall be cast on shore on the coast of Wadenoum or any coast thereabout. The people to her shall be protected and assisted until by the help of God, they shall be sent to their country.
Alright, article eleven.
If we shall be at war with any Christian power and any of our vessels sail from the ports of the United States of America. No vessel belonging to the enemy shall follow until forty-eight, twenty-four hours after the departure of our vessels. And the same regulation shall be observed towards the American vessels sailing from our ports to the enemy's Moors or Christians.
Alright, so one of the things that we should point out relatively quickly, especially for new people that's at home watching. You continuously see in article eleven, they mention the word Moor. I've talked about in my previous videos that anybody thinks they're Negro, black and color. The reality is, your nationality is Moor. And if these treaties. These contracts are applicable to you to be enforced through your state. So watch this. People that call themselves Negro, black or color. Especially the Black Law, Black Lives Matter. They must understand, if they really want justice. They really want peace. They must understand the treaty of peace and friendship. But they must proclaim their nationality to be a Moor. That must be known. Alright, let's continue.
Article twelve. If any ship of war belonging to the United States of America shall put into any of our ports. We shall not be examined on any pretense whatsoever, even though she. She shall not be examined on any pretense whatever, even though she should have fugitive slaves on board. Nor shall the governor or the commander of the place compel them to be brought on shore on any pretext nor require any payment for, for them.
Continue.
Article thirteen. If a ship of war of either party shall put into a port of the other and salute, it shall be returned from a fort with an equal number of guns. Not with more or less.
Continue.
Article fourteen. The commerce with the United States of America shall be on the same footing as is the commerce with Spain. Or as that with the most favored nation for the time being. And their citizens shall be respected and esteemed. And have full liberty to pass and repass our country and seaports whenever they please without interruption.
Okay, let's talk about article fourteen, alright? The commerce with the United States of America shall be on the same footing as in the commerce with Spain. Or as that with the most favorite nation. Who's the most favorite nation? They're talking seventeen eighty-six right now. You know who that is? It is France. A lot of people continue to forget, especially the Moors. That France in the year seventeen seventy-eight. That France was appointed. As the consul. Consulor court, consul general. To deal with all the affairs of the United States in seventeen seventy-eight. So the Sultan of Morocco appointed a Frenchman by the name of D. Adibert Kaye. And he made him the consul court on behalf of the United States of America in seventeen seventy-eight. Why is that important to understand? Because the United States, even in the year seventeen eighty-six, did not have consul court. France was the intermediary to deal with all the affairs of the United States of America. As well as the protectorate of the Moors. Who were living in northwest of Mexum. Also known as the Maghrib Al-Ex. The most extreme west, i.e. part of the Moroccan Empire, which is commonly known as North America. So you must always remember that France. Is acting as the appointed liaison. For the United States of America at this time. So it continues to read. And their citizens shall be respected and esteemed. And have full liberty to pass and repass our country and seaports whenever they please without interruption. So what's happening here? Spain, France, the United States. Had every right to come into the seaports of Morocco's empire, but guess who did not? Great Britain. You must understand during this time, the United States is fighting for their independence from Great Britain. France came to the United States and said, listen, let's sign a treaty. We'll help you with this war to beat the British cause we don't like the British either. So they signed a treaty in seventeen seventy-eight. Listen. So in seventeen seventy-eight, the United States of America and France signed a treaty. Which is the same year the Sultan of Morocco appointed France to be the protector of the United States. You must understand, that's not a coincidence that France signed a treaty with the United States in seventeen seventy-eight. Alright, that must be known. To put things in proper context as we're reading article fourteen. That's where they mentioning Spain. But France was also a part of that, but the Sultan already had a relationship with France. He was establishing one with Spain. Okay, so what you will understand later on as you start studying, researching, Spain and France signed a treaty. To go and help protect the United States of America to beat the British. So France, Spain and United States of America came together and defeated the British. That war in around seventeen eighty-one. They fully ratified what's called the Ghent Treaty. Of eighteen fourteen. After that. Alright, so let's put things in proper context. Okay, article fifteen.
Merchants of both countries shall employ only such interpreters and such other persons to assist them in their business as they shall think proper. No commander of a vessel shall transport his cargo onboard another vessel. He shall not be detained in port longer than he may think proper. And all persons employed in loading. Or unloading goods or in any labor whatever shall be paid at the customary rates, not more and not less.
Let's continue.
Article sixteen. In case of a war between the parties, the prisoners are not to be made slaves, but to be exchanged one for another. Captain for captain, officer for officer and one, one private man for another. And if there shall prove a deficiency on either side, it shall be made up by the payment of one hundred Mexican dollars for each person wanting. And it is agreed that all person, prisoners shall be exchanged in twelve months from the time of their being taken. And that this exchange may be affected by a merchant or any other person authorized by either. By either of the parties.
Okay, watch this. This is gonna take some real understanding for all Moors to really understand what's going on. Let me give you my interpretations in a strict sense. In case of a war between the parties, right now, the parties are at war. The prisoners are not to be made slaves. The United States of America has made all Moors slaves. Slaves to what? Being black. They're slaves in their mind. They think they have no rights. They're in prisons and they're imprisoning their mind too because they think. That they have no rights. Watch this. But to be exchanged one for another, captain for captain, officer for officer and one private man for another. And if there shall prove a deficiency on either side, it should be made up by the payment of one hundred Mexican dollars. Stop. Why is the Sultan talking about Mexican dollars? Sultan had plenty of gold. Moors had plenty of gold. Guess who didn't have any gold? The United States of America. Why? Cause they no longer want to be British. So now they want the independence, you better come up with your own money. At that time, they had no gold and silver. Keep in mind, George Washington, when he wrote his letter in seventeen eighty-nine. He said, there's really no gold and silver on these coasts. So Sidi Mohammed is telling the United States of America, they use Mexican coin. As a substitute for the fact that they lacked any money. Now watch this. And it is agreed that all prisoners shall be exchanged in twelve months from the time of their being taken. And that this exchange may be affected by a merchant or any other person authorized. Of, of, or by either of the parties. Listen, Moors. If you're not authorized. You can't help no one that's been in prison. Watch this. Why are Moors still in prison that claim their nationality and they still being detained, arrested and adjudicated? It's because Moors haven't been following the instructions. We have to get back to international law and understand, we need a state. We have to check the boxes as Moors. We must follow what's called just cogits, article fifty-three. Of the Treaty of Vienna. Because the Vienna Convention Treaty is a treaty in itself. And you cannot interrupt the norms of international law. Now watch this. Why is the United States really fighting the Moors right now? Well, number one. We know, they know that we're coming for the estate. They don't want to give up the estate. Number two, they got a whole lot of our brothers and sisters in prison. And they know they have to release them immediately. Why? Because it's been well over twelve months. When Moors have a state. Now they can say under their laws, their constitution. They can enforce the treaty. Release our nationals, which means that those unconscious Moors and Moors that are in prison. Can now pledge their allegiance. To a free national state government. And that free national state government, once they receive those allegiance forms. Now you can enforce the treaty. But until then, guess what? Moorish subjects who are proclaiming their nationality, but then check the rest of these boxes. Unfortunately, are going to continue to be adjudicated. All you have to do is go back and look at. What they call case law of the United States of America versus Burton. They're using that as a so-called precedent. And that came out April sixth of twenty twenty-one. They're using that as a means of defense. To block Moors. Why? Because Moors don't have a state. Cause they're not enforcing and understanding what it means. To be abiding by international law. But once the Moors wake up and realize the answer to the test. We will get our brothers and sisters out of jail. Let's continue.
Article seventeen. Merchants shall not be compelled to buy or sell any kind of goods, but such as they shall think proper. And may buy and sell all sorts of merchandise, but such as are prohibited to the other Christian nations.
Continue.
Article eighteen. All goods shall be weighed and examined before they are sent on abroad. And to avoid all detention of vessels, no examination shall afterwards be made. Unless it first, unless it shall first be proved that contraband goods have been sent onboard, in which case. The persons who took the contraband goods onboard shall be punished according to the usage and custom of the country. And no other person whatever shall be injured, nor shall the ship or cargo incur any penalty or damage whatever.
Okay, watch this. Article eighteen. Thank you, mother. All goods shall be weighed and examined before they are sent onboard. And to avoid all detention of vessels. Keep in mind, vessels are people. No examination shall afterwards be made unless it shall be proved. That contraband goods have been sent onboard. In which case, the persons who took the contraband goods onboard shall be punished. What are they really saying here? The United States of America takes advantage of that. It's called probable cause. Cops roll up on you, they say, we got probable cause. They can detain you and arrest you and adjudicate you. Why? Cause you're still a Moorish subject. Much less a Negro, black or color. Moors must understand. That if you don't have a state. You're admitting the jurisdiction. I'll say it again. If Moors don't have a state constitution and check the boxes. You're admitting the jurisdiction. Why? Because international law says you must have a state. That's why. And until then, you come under the protections. Laws, statutes, policies and codes of that country. That's why I'm pointing this out. Watch this. Continue the reading. The person who took the contraband goods onboard shall be punished. According to the usage and customs of the country. What country am I talking about? The United States of America is punishing unconscious Moors. And Moors who are proclaiming their nationality, but lack a state. Let's continue, article nineteen.
No ves, no vessel shall be detained in port on any pretense whatever, nor be obliged to take onboard. Any articles without the consent of the commander. Who shall but be at full liberty to agree. To agree for the freight of any goods he takes onboard.
Continue.
Article twenty.
Here we go.
If any of the citizens of the United States of America or any person, persons under their protection. Shall have any disputes with each other, the consul shall decide between the parties. And whenever the consul shall require any aid or assistance from our government to enforce his decisions. It shall immediately be granted to him.
Now watch this. Moors always use article twenty in all their documents. This is the most favorite article of them all. Let's talk about it. There's two things being said here that Moors keep missing. Watch this. If any of the citizens of the United States. Or any person under their protection. So who else is under their protections? Moor subjects. Unconscious. And conscious. Shall have any disputes with each other. So what's happening? If Moors are arguing with the United States of America, they're conscious. Or the unconscious Moors or Black Lives Matter arguing with the United States of America? Cause they're the protective parties too. Watch this. The consul shall decide between the parties. The United States of America hasn't been using consul. When dealing with Moors. Or dealing with. Their property called the United States of America citizens. Be it Negro, black or color. Watch this. And whenever the council shall require any aid or assistance from our government. To enforce his decisions. It shall be immediately granted to him. Wait a minute. Doesn't it sound like the Sultan is talking in third party? Who's the third party talking about the consul? Who's the consul? France. You gotta know the history, Moors. You gotta go back to seventeen seventy-eight to understand that France. By the decree of the Moroccan Empire, the Sultan. Made France the consulor on behalf of the United States. So therefore, Moors, listen. If Moors are having a dispute. With the United States of America over here in northwest of Mexum. Commonly known as the United States of America, which is a corporation. Claiming an extraterritorial jurisdiction that's false. And you must understand, during that time of seventeen eighty-six. France would come in. As the consul court. And provide protections for all Moors as well as the United States. The United States of America did not have consul court at the time. So watch this. So therefore, in article twenty, you must understand that last segment of the sentence where it said, it shall be immediately granted to him. He's saying that when France. Can't get the United States of America and the Moor to come to an agreement, then France can bring it over to the Sultan. And by the Sultan's own power, he can make a decision. Basically called a de novo. A de novo means that the Sultan takes it on as the highest court and he makes a decision. Alright? So Moors must understand under article twenty, we've been misinterpreting it because we really haven't been studying the history. We must understand, during this time, France was the protector. We must understand that during this time, France was the protector, and guess what? In the twenty-first century, France still has limited protectorate status, we'll talk about that another day. Let's continue to Article twenty-one.
Oh, sorry. If any citizen of the United States shall kill or wound a Moor, or on the contrary, if a Moor shall kill or wound a citizen of the United States, the law of the country shall take place, and equal justice shall be rendered, the consul assisting at the trial, and if any delinquent shall make his escape, the consul shall not be answerable for him in any manner whatever.
Thank you mother, watch this, this is starting to make sense now about France, watch this. If any citizen of the United States should kill or wound a Moor, or on the contrary, if a Moor shall kill or wound a citizen of the United States of America, the law of the country shall take place, and equal justice shall be rendered, the consul assisting at the trial, who's the consul? France. And if any delinquent, delinquent shall make his escape, if the United States runoff citizen, if a Moor runoff, national, the consul shall not be answerable for him in any manner whatsoever, why? Because France is not responsible for each of the parties. France is a liaison, an intermediary, but not responsible if another party runs off. But France is there to assist, to advocate as the consul holding court. That must be understood based upon that timeframe. So now, Moors have to create their own state. That way they have their own consulate court. That way they can enforce their own nationals' rights according to the treaty. Take our affairs into our own hands because we have the constitution for our state provincial government. That's under the Moroccan Empire. So it is the mother flag. Mother flag and the state provincial flag working harmony. You must understand, all around the world, all the states have a flag. But this is the mother flag, this is the mother flag of all states. That's the truth, why? Because the entire world is the Moorish empire, because Moors populated the earth. That is the truth. Let's continue.
Article twenty-two. If an American citizen shall die in our country, and no will shall appear, the consul shall take possession of his effects. And if there shall be no consul, the effects shall be deposited in the lands in the hands of some person worthy of trust until the party shall appear, who has right to demand them. But if the heir to the person deceased may be present, is present, the property shall be delivered to him without interruptions. And if a will shall appear, the property shall descend agreeable to that which, that will as soon as the consul shall declare the validity thereof.
Watch this. Moors love Article twenty-two. But our concepts have been flawed. Watch this. If an American citizen shall die in our country, and no will shall appear, the consul should take possession of his effects, so who's the consul? France at this time. And if there shall be no consul, the effects shall be deposited in the hands of some person worthy of trust, what does that mean? If France hasn't come in to deal with this immediately, in the interim, those possessions go to someone else in the interim. Watch this. And if there shall be no consul, the effects shall be deposited in the hands of some person worthy of trust until the party shall appear, who has the right to demand them. Moors are making demands. But do we have the right? There's an overwhelming probability that the answer is no. Why is it no? Because Moors aren't checking the boxes. You check these boxes, now you have the right. It's just cogits under international law, when we looked up treaty, the first thing you saw was international law. That tells you nearly the instructions to the test to make a demand to think you got rights, you have to follow international law. That's the truth. Watch this, but, continue with but, but if the heir to the person deceased be present, the property shall be delivered to him without interruptions, how can the property be delivered back to the Moors without interruption? How? Because you have a state. And you check the boxes. Then it'll be returned to you without interruption. That's just cogits. That's what you call just cogits, let's continue. The property shall be delivered to him without interruption. And if a will shall appear, the property shall descend agreeable to that will as soon as the consul shall declare the validity thereof, watch this. What is the will? The will is the constitution. The will is your birth records. The will is your oath and allegiance to said state and nation. The will is all these documents that are political documents that the mothers, the matriarchal council puts together to make the claim to her child. This is a birth record. Because right now, the adopted parent has possession of the body. And once the matriarchal council brings her child back into the nation through political documents, that will be by her will and her will alone. That's the truth according to international law. Let's continue.
Article twenty-three. The consuls of the United States of America shall reside in any port of our dominions that they shall think proper. And they shall be respected and enjoy all the privileges which the consuls of any other nation enjoy. And if any of the citizens of the United States shall contract any debts or engagements, the consul shall not be in any manner accountable for them unless he shall have given a promise in writing for the payment or fulfilling, fulfilling thereof, without which promise in writing, no application, application to him for any redress shall be made.
Thank you mother, watch this, let's jump into interpretations real quick. The consuls of the United States of America shall reside in any port of our dominion, who's the consul for the United States of America? France. Shall think proper, and they shall be respected. The Emperor of Morocco is telling the United States of America, you will respect France as well as the Moors. And enjoy all the privileges which the consuls of any other nation enjoy, see, that's a key point right there. What's happening, United States, when France comes over, the United States of America jurisdiction based upon the thirteen colonies? Because we're talking thirteen colonies when Sidi Mohammed allowed them to stay, when France came over, they have to extend respect to France. Because France was there on behalf of the Sultan. Watch this. And if any of the citizens of the United States shall contract any debts or engagements, and consul shall not be in any manner accountable for them unless he shall have given a promise in writing for the payment or fulfilling thereof, without which promise in writing, no application to him for any redress shall be made, watch this, what does that mean? If it ain't in writing, can't be enforced. But what has the United States of America been doing? They've been putting a lot of things in writing without the consent of the other party, that's what makes a contract. It can't be a unilateral contract, must be two parties coming together. So therefore, both parties' names are not on that contract, is what you call null and void. And more than likely, is what you call ad void, ab initio, void, ab initio, void from the beginning because it's an ex parte contract. Moors never agreed to be citizens of the United States. We've been subjugated and usurped through the corruption of representatives of the state of the United States of America. Through coercion of the representatives of the state of the United States of America. And through their use of force, the United States of America has conquered us. And there's only one way to get your rights back. Full rights. Full powers. And that's what it meant, and check the boxes. Let's continue.
Okay, Article twenty-four. If any differences shall arise by either party, infringing on any of the articles of this treaty, peace and harmony shall remain notwithstanding in the fullest force until a friendly application shall be made for an arrangement. And until that application shall be rejected, no appeal shall be made to arms. And if a war shall break out between the parties, nine months shall be granted to all the subjects of both parties to dispose of their effects and retire with their property. And it is further declared that whatever indulgences in trade or otherwise shall be granted to any of the Christian powers, the citizens of the United States shall be equally entitled to them.
Thank you mother, watch this. If any, any, any differences shall arise by either party infringing on any of the articles of this treaty, stop. Watch this. Are Moor subjects a party to the treaty? The answer is no. Why? In order for Moors to enforce their rights, they must have a state, and that state says now they have a right to be a party to the contract. And until then, you are not a party to the contract according to just cogits, Article fifty-three of the Treaty of Vienna. That is the hard truth that Moors must understand now and forevermore. That we need to be parties to the contract in order to enforce said contract. Because the Moors got all kinds of treaties with the so-called European powers. Moors can never enforce none of them until they are party. That's the truth. Let's continue, Article twenty-five.
This treaty shall continue in full force with the help of God for fifty years. We delivered this book into the hands of the before-mentioned Thomas Barkley on the first day of the blessed month of Ramadan in the year one thousand two hundred. I certify that the annex, annexed is a true copy of the translation made by Isaac Cardozo Nunez, interpreter at Morocco of the treaty between the Emperor of Morocco and the United States of America.
So the parties are known in the beginning, and the parties are known in the end. The parties are not black people. The parties are Moroccans of Morocco, also known as the Moors, as clearly stated in the body of the treaty. Now watch this. Moors must start to understand something very clear. This right here, what I wrote up here is just a basic, basic understanding of some of the basic themes that we need to create a state. But what I just put up here comes under, under one word. And that word is called post-laminium. Post-laminium. Post-laminium means you have every right to make your claim under your sovereign rights as a people, as a nation, to remove the conqueror out of your land and your favors. But under post-laminium, according to the Vienna Convention, you must have a state in order to be able to claim the rights of your nation. That way you're no, no longer Moorish subjects. You're now Moorish nationals under your own free nation of your state. That's the truth. Those are the instructions for Moors to get their rights back.